Okay, so I'd like to call the meeting to order. Welcome, everyone, to the Easton School Committee meeting of Thursday, January 18th, 2024. This meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format where attendance by committee members may be remote or in person, and remote attendance shall count toward quorum. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded on ECAT. For tonight's meeting, we have committee member Jackie Wiseman and student representative Marvel Nimmer participating remotely, and all other attendees are present in the Simmons Lecture Hall. This meeting is open to the public. Members of the public attending in person who wish to make comments will be invited to do so during the public comment period of tonight's meeting and will be required to state their name and address before beginning their comments. So with that, we'll move to the first item on the agenda, which is the introduction of the Director of Human Resources, and I'm going to make a motion to table.
Yes, please.
That for tonight. Okay, can I get a second?
Second, Loomis.
And roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes?
Loomis, yes?
First year, yes.
All right.
I forgot.
I just know I don't ask. Sorry, sorry, everybody else is fine.
Okay, so next up on the agenda is the MBTA by right multifamily zoning presentation. So we have Peter Duchenne, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Board, and Stephanie Danielson, the Director of Planning and Economic Development, here to present. So Dr. Cabral, do you have anything you want to introduce before we move?
I don't. I think this is very comprehensive, and they should be able to answer all of your questions. I would suggest we move to the front so that you have a good view.
Yes.
And I would like to welcome Peter and Stephanie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pretty sensitive, so they.
Okay, if everyone can hear me okay, I'm Peter Duchenne, the Chair of the Planning Board. This is Stephanie Danielson, the Director of Planning and Economic Development. So a few years ago, the state passed a law which included a provision that required towns like Easton that a MBTA community to enact certain zoning changes to allow multifamily as of right in certain zones. It doesn't require that a certain amount of like units get built over a certain amount of time, but we do have to create that allowance. So that's a little bit different than how we've done things in the past in Easton. You know, we have some zoning in place to allow multifamily with special permit. And by right, you know, by right means that it's a little bit more of a streamlined process than a special permit where we can ask for a few other items that might not be applicable to an as-of-right approval. So we have kind of brought some neighborhood people together and held some public hearings, and we've got this far with our proposal. We still have time to make changes, so we're here to inform you what we've put together so far, but also if you have questions or ideas, this is the time to bring them up because there's not that much time left. So Stephanie has a presentation.
Yeah, I'm going to swap places. I should have stood this.
Yep, kind of. Do I explain the state requirements, and then we'll show you what we have worked on so far.
Okay, so thank you, everybody. We're glad to be here so we can talk about this important zoning initiative. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to talk about what is the MBTA communities law. Peter gave you kind of a high-level bird's-eye view. I'll talk in more detail about that, what that actually means. And then I'm going to talk about what it means to Easton, why we need to comply with the law, and then the steps that Easton has taken towards compliance. And Peter will join me for that discussion as well. So this law was enacted as part of the 2021 Economic Development Bill. Governor Baker signed it into law at that time. I know that Governor Healy supports this initiative. It is a zoning requirement that MBTA communities, and that's a community that either has an MBTA transit station located within the town borders, or it borders a community that has MBTA transit. And in Easton's case, we don't have an MBTA train station here in the community, but Easton abuts Brockton, Mansfield, and Stone, which all do. And the law added a new section to the 40A, Chapter 40A of the general law. And 40A is generally referred to as the Zoning Act. So it added this new section that defines what it means to be an MBTA community and have by-right zoning. It applies to 177 other cities and towns around Boston that are also identified as MBTA communities. So the main intent is to reduce local regulatory barriers to multifamily housing. And how does that tie to an economic development bill? Well, I think many of you probably are well aware that housing costs in Massachusetts have increased, I think astronomically is maybe a little dramatic term, but not too much, and affordable housing in particular is really rare and at a premium for people. And when people can't afford to live in the state, they start moving out. And you can't attract new people to the state. And that impacts your workforce at all levels, whether it's at the professional level or it's at the labor level. It impacts that. And that impacts business. It makes it difficult for local businesses to grow because they can't hire the people they need to do the work of their businesses, and it makes it difficult to attract new businesses to the state, especially large employers. In Easton, we don't have a lot of large employer-based businesses. I think Stonehill is the largest employer, but we have a lot of local businesses that rely on local workforce. Okay, I talked about what the MBTA communities were. I want to talk just a little bit more, I'm going to go back for a second, on what that local regulatory barriers looks like. Peter talked about the fact that in Easton, right now, we allow multifamily housing, but it requires a special permit, and it's often tied to a requirement for mixed use with commercial uses as well. We do have a section of the zoning code that allows multifamily by right without a special permit, but it requires that you have 60,000 square feet of land to start. And on that 60,000 square feet of land, you can only build three dwelling units, and you can only have three bedrooms in total. So if you think about that, that just doesn't make sense. Nobody's going to build that. You can add 20,000 square feet, make it a little bit bigger, but in the end, you can still only have 10 bedrooms or 10 dwelling units. So that's what they're talking about, and this is not unique to Easton. This is happening in communities across the state and across the country. There is zoning in place to prohibit multifamily zoning. So the requirements of the law are, again, that the zoning be allowed by right, that it can't be denied. If the project meets the minimum, the maximum standards or the minimum standards, it can't be denied by the planning board. And I'll talk in a minute about a level of oversight that the planning board has, but it's a level that cannot result in a denial of a project. Your zoning district has to allow a minimum of 15 units per acre, and the district itself needs to be 50 acres in total. Now, that 50 acres can be comprised of sub-districts, so you could have smaller sub-districts. One of the sub-districts has to be a minimum of 25 acres, contiguous acres, and then your smaller districts can be no smaller than five contiguous acres. It can't have any restrictions or limits on the age of occupants, so it can't be restricted to only older people, it can't restrict families, it can't restrict the size of the units or the number of the bedrooms. If you're an MBTA community and not an MBTA-adjacent community, which Easton is an MBTA-adjacent community, you have to locate that district within a half-mile of a transit station. Adjacent communities are encouraged, if they can't locate it within a half-mile, none of the train stations in our neighboring communities are within a half-mile of Easton. What the state would like you to do and recommends is that you locate your district in an area where there are services for people, whether that's shopping, its opportunities for working, its opportunities for healthcare, et cetera, and that it be located near, like in our transportation corridor. I talked about all those requirements. In addition to that, you need, you need to accommodate a minimum of 10% of the town's permanent housing stock as of the 2020 census. And in Easton, that number is 9,128. So our district in total needs to be able to accommodate or permit a minimum of 913 units. So that's in addition to the 15, not in addition, but it's a goal, a number that you have to be able to accommodate in total. What the law does not require, Peter mentioned this, it doesn't require that you build this. This is really to provide an opportunity for developers who want to come in, build multifamily housing, and be able to do that with a certainty that the project would be able to be permitted. It doesn't require the town to pay for development in the district for infrastructure, I'm sorry, for infrastructure improvements if they're needed in the district. When I talked about the state encouraging communities that are adjacent communities to think about where they locate their districts, I mean, one of the things they want you to consider is, do you have areas where there's adequate sewer treatment, adequate utilities to serve new development? But that's not a requirement, and they don't require that you build it if it's not there. They figure developers know how to do this, they know how to do the work, and they'll take care of that. It doesn't override the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, and in fact, if your district has wetlands in it, there's a calculation that the state has put together to determine that you meet the guidelines, and they will, that calculation removes the area of the wetlands. So it doesn't override the Wetlands Protection Act, it doesn't override the local by-law, Wetlands by-law, or Title V. Another important factor, it does not provide options for waivers or opt-outs. MBTA communities have to comply with the law. The date by which we, as an adjacent community, need to adopt the zoning is the end of this year. So the planning board is planning on voting on a final district and bringing this to-town meeting in May and is hoping for a positive turnout, but if that doesn't happen, we'll try again in fall. We talked about that. I talked a little bit about some oversight that the town can have on a project that's being proposed. It's what we call site plan review. The planning board has that capability today for any commercial project, a new project that's either being built or a new use of property for commercial use and for other large-scale residential development. And it really is restricted to making sure there's sufficient access to the property for vehicles and pedestrians, emergency vehicles going into the property and around it, making sure that all works and we're not creating some hazardous situations or opportunities. Some exterior architectural design, again, you can't dictate what it looks like inside, what the floor plan is, but the board can develop some design guidelines on what they'd like visually the developments to look like, and screening of adjacent properties, so making sure there's adequate screening from the abutting properties. Again, it can't be used to deny a project or impose conditions that would make it infeasible or uneconomic for development. Communities may also require up to 10% of the units be affordable. And that's something that we're currently incorporating into the draft zoning, and we feel that's important because I think many of you are probably familiar with the state's 40B requirement, that a community's housing stock be at least 10% affordable, and that's with a deed restriction, and it, when you have those housing units that are considered affordable, they go on what we call the subsidized housing inventory. And in order to kind of keep up with that 10%, Easton really worked very hard, in the time that I've worked for the town, to, I think we were around, the town was around 3% back in 2006, and worked very hard with developers to bring in affordable housing that made sense for the community and get that number to 10%. Because of some projects that haven't moved forward as fast as we thought they would, that number's dropped to about 9.5, so the town needs to continue to work to get it back up to 10%, and this will help with that. And if anyone has questions along the way, we're happy to answer those.
Yeah, just ask away, right, because we don't want to save them all till the end, but.
Or you can. Okay, so I mentioned that there's no waiver, you can't opt-out of this, and we have to comply. So what happens if we don't? Well, right now, what the state is saying is, there are two things. First, the Attorney General has basically said, you know, we will come and we will hold you accountable. More, as importantly, is the town will no longer be eligible for certain state funding programs. And these are funding programs that help the town with infrastructure development and planning, also for planning like master plans. The town envisioned Easton, our master plan is 10 years old. These grants can help fund those efforts, which are, you know, tens of thousands and sometimes millions of dollars in cost. It includes the MassWorks program, which is primarily infrastructure grant funding and housing choice capital grants, which help with planning for future development, and the Complete Streets program, which helps bring, helps bring your roads up to a standard that they accommodate all your users. These projects here are just a small list, but between 2011 and 2022, Easton has benefited from around $8 million in, from these grant programs. The grant cycle is usually starts in June, and they make announcements in October. This June, we submitted four applications for funding. All four were granted and totaling $400,000. And one of those grants includes an update to the, a 10-year update to the master plan. Other reasons, it really helps Easton achieve its housing goals that have been identified in several of the plans that the town has worked on over the years, including the Affordable Housing Trust Action Plan, the Age Friendly Community Plan, and the Envision Easton Master So this slide here, I can come back to this. This is just a kind of a timeline of the steps the town has taken to come into compliance, just demonstrating that, starting with the meeting with the Select Board, who appointed an implementation review team, and then the planning board really starting to actively work on the zoning. A lot of activity has taken place. I'm not going backwards, am I? So we'll.
Yeah, okay.
You want to talk about the districts?
Yeah, sure. Yep, so like Stephanie said, the Select Board put together a group to identify, it was about like seven or eight potential areas. So we figured that there was a good group that, you know, had a good proposal, so we kind of narrowed those down to what we have, now have three, I guess there were a few members here on that group, in that group. So the first here is the Foundry Eastman section. That's where Target and the grocery stores.
Yeah, I'm going to go up.
Yeah, do you want to do a point?
I'll slay banana.
So you can say. Yep, so with Target, if you want.
That's good.
Yep, Target, Avalon, yep, the grocery store Plaza. Over to the left, that's just like, it's a large, it's a kind of commercial industrial, like used like a warehouse.
Yes, yeah, they were a manufacturer, but now I think it's primarily being used as a warehouse.
Yep, so most of it's already built, you know, we kind of chose areas that we'd already identified and set up zoning for multifamily, so that we're not just like adding more area, right, so, yeah, than we already have as far as multifamily is concerned. There are a few vacant lots in the front there, those look like little fingers kind of sticking out in the corner, yeah. So, so those could potentially be developed, but as you'll see, when you see like the, you know, the area and the potential units that we have for these three zones, we can still narrow these down to smaller zones, right? So we have a little more than we need right now, so we can work with the neighborhood groups and everyone else really, to bring that down to about the level that we have to, need to have. We're not going to like go, say like, oh, we want to make sure, go with like 1,200 potential multifamily units, we're sticking with the 900 or so. So that's the first area. Do you have any questions about the area? Oh, go ahead.
So if I'm looking at that right, so Target's in the back, on the bottom right side, is that used to be?
That's the Big Y Plaza, TJ Maxx, yep.
So does that area count towards zoning?
Even Avalon does.
So the way the zoning works, and that's a good question, if you didn't ask the question, I was going to explain that.
Okay.
Because you look at this and you go, well, where is it going to be developed? So a lot of communities are looking at, where do we already have some of this development at that density level? And Avalon, with the new development, this doesn't show the additional units. There were about 40 additional units to the 280, so right now, there's like 340 units. So that meets the, it's just over 15 units per acre. And that, that won't be redeveloped. I mean, Target, I mean, Avalon, that's what they do, they build these and then they manage them, and it's a long-term investment on their part. I mean, the other, these areas could be developed with the zoning, they're upland areas, so there are no wetlands there. They'd be available for new development, and the other areas could be redeveloped at some point.
All right, like if the large, the commercial or industrial.
And the zoning, so the way the state said, you know, you can, you can, you don't have to have your district cover vacant lots. There are some areas, and you'll see in particular on the next one we show you, that even though some of the parcels are developed, they're kind of underdeveloped, there's an opportunity for infill there. And we know that there are some parcels that have been purchased by a developer, and this is the type of development that they would like to construct there. The other thing is that the underlying zoning, we are doing this as an overlay district, and an overlay district means that it's something that kind of sits on top of the existing zoning, and you can take advantage of it or not, but the underlying zoning is still in play. So if you wanted to develop under the underlying zoning, then you could go ahead and do that. And in this area, this is primarily zoned under the regular zoning as commercial and mixed use.
So at some point, if a developer came in and said, I want to buy this entire plaza and parking lot and raise it and put in multifamily housing.
Yes.
This would allow that to exist?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. To 15 units per acre. Now, there are some communities that their zoning is going to allow a higher number than 15 units, just because that makes sense for them in their target growth areas. Our board felt that 15 units per acre is sufficient.
And as you probably know, this area has the Mansfield, it's connected to the Mansfield, the regional sewer, and the train station is about.
Four miles.
Yeah, four miles down the road to Mansfield.
And this is all sewered, so.
And 495 is down the road.
So I'm trying to follow this map, and I just can't.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, so I see like round table up there, right, so then, so like where's Paquana Kit?
Paquana Kit's over here.
Okay, so where's Foundry?
This is Foundry Street right here.
But that says Eastman.
It turns into.
Thank you, we will fix that tomorrow. You know, Foundry Street takes a left-hand turn.
I only know.
And heads south, a 90-degree turn south, and then becomes Eastman Street.
So Eastman is 106, which leads to Mansfield.
Yes.
Okay.
But I will, we will update this map tomorrow to make sure we have Foundry Street.
Just a giant 106.
Yes.
Sorry.
No, that, no, these are good questions.
So is Eastman Mansfield or is Eastman East?
No, it is Easton.
Okay.
Until it hits the Mansfield line.
Okay.
Just the road changes its name there, and Foundry goes down, you know, towards Northern, to 495.
It changes three more times. Do you get it?
Yep, right, because it's like. Because why not, right?
Katu, right, Katua, whatever.
Or did you have another question?
No, that was it, thank you.
That was it, okay, good, thank you.
So I'm just trying to, I'm also trying to follow, are, is the, are you tasked to identify land for this, or is the 900 units part of what you are planning on as well?
So we have to target land and land, enough land that would support 900 units under the required zoning, right? So there's a formula that the state has put together where you take, you know, your lots and your land, and you put it into the formula, and the state's formula says, okay, yes, this will support that many units under.
So Avalon, for example, those 200 units count towards those 900 units?
You can look at it that, if the state ever came and said, oh, you haven't developed this yet, we could say, well, wait a minute, this is already developed to that. I mean, but that's, so, yes, but it's not a counting game. It's really just being able to, it's allowing someone to be able to develop the multifamily. But yes, that, and we, when we first started evaluating the districts, that was one of the things that everyone's like, well, this will count towards that.
It's possible that.
It demonstrates that you're, this demonstrates that you're on your way with that number because you, you have that 15 units per acre right there.
And it's possible that this particular zone, which is the largest, might not end up looking as big as it is because, like we were saying, we have more area than we need right now, we're just keeping our options open.
So I don't, but because you're talking in this direction, so right now, the way this is configured, it, this is 68 acres in total, so that would meet the 50-acre contiguous minimum. And it could accommodate, based on the model that the state has given us to calculate the density with, it could accommodate like 1,011 units. But as Peter said, there are other districts, and there is probably a strong likelihood that that will be carved down a little bit.
Given that about, maybe like, maybe like 90% of the comments that we've received from the public have been people that live right around there, because they feel like they're already bearing the, you know, they'd like the kind of, the rest of the town to share the, like, share the experience.
In the development, they are experiencing a lot of development, a lot of positive development, but at the same time, you know, it's making changes there, and there's always.
So is, is the plan?
So is, is the plan for the development to be where the fingers are?
So, again, we're not, we don't know where it would be developed. It's just identifying a district that someone could develop.
We can remove the finger.
Or redevelop.
If that's a develop...
Or redevelop.
Oh, okay, so they could, like, I think this is what Jen was saying, they could buy the whole place and knock it all down, is that...
I have Target in my mind.
Yes, yes.
They could knock it down as a warehouse.
Or like, if that were to happen, would happen in smaller pieces, or maybe that they could land in the first...
Yeah, overtime, yeah.
Got it, okay. So they could turn that warehouse into a community.
Yes, that's probably, of anything that might be redeveloped in the near future, it probably would be the warehouse. I mean, that just would be my guess, based on how we see development. The retail outlets seem to be doing quite well. I think that Avalon being there has really given them quite a boost. We see a lot of activity. You'll know that there's a Starbucks there. When I started working for the town 17 years ago, Starbucks wasn't coming to Easton. Well, here they are.
Now there's two.
And, yeah, exactly, exactly, so...
To the point on what you're required to have, that gives the people in a community that would be developed there, like Avalon has now, the ability to walk to a grocery store.
Exactly.
And to Target to get what they need, and to have all of their basics met within walking distance.
Yes.
And they are down the street, or is, from Mansfield Public Transportation as well.
Yes, and we'll talk more about that with, especially the next district too. I mean, this is definitely walkable to a lot of different services, and then when, I don't know if you're all aware, but one of the planning grants that we received was to do the early design work for the roadway improvements for Foundry Street between Depot and Eastman, which will result not only in traffic improvement, traffic management improvements, but a sidewalk and pedestrian, a sidewalk and bicycle lanes. So then people can walk...
We also have new pond, old pond, and possibly another small park in the area.
Yep.
We can farm down the road with the Bay Circuit Trail, yeah.
Wasn't that all for, like, the Furnace Village area?
The, it, that improvement...
Yeah.
Will extend that full mile between Depot and Foundry and Eastman Street, or Rabbit Drive. And you might be thinking, as part of the Sawmill Project, which is...
Maybe.
A residential subdivision that's being built across the intersection of Paquannicket Avenue and Foundry. As part of that project, the developer is going to install, it will be, end up being temporary, but it will be, there will be a turning lane that's going to be added, and then there'll be a traffic light. And that's expected to be completed this spring.
Are you ready to move on to the next zone? All right. Do you have to click or should I?
Use the right arrow on the...
Yeah.
All right, let's see, here we have Washington Belmont, it's the corner of Washington and Belmont, so, let's see. So, here's Route 138, Washington Belmont is going down towards, towards 123 in Brockton, right? Okay, are you familiar, does everyone kind of locate here?
I'd like to point to the marketplace, just because, are people familiar with the marketplace?
Yeah, okay, so, we know where we are here now, so, so starting with the marketplace, we'll start down here on the, I guess you call it, yeah, southwest, the marketplace, around the corner, you have the, now it's like a dry cleaners and the health nutrition shop and a couple other, I think I've wandered that now, right? Okay, I'm going down, let's take the auto parts store, is now for sale, I think that there's a flourish there, and kind of some, like, kind of like, either some apartmety, plus like some, like smaller retail along the, yep, along Belmont.
CVS is on the left, right, kind of out of the frame?
Yeah, across, yep.
Stone Hills across the street.
Yeah, Stone Hills across the street.
Yep, and then in the...
Where's Honeydew?
Honeydew is right.
Yeah, right across the street, yeah, it's across the street, okay.
You know how you can tell someone's from Massachusetts? When they give directions and they tell you where the landmarks are? And the ones that aren't there anymore, but they were there, you know, 20 years ago.
Andrew's Bakery is down that.
Yes, okay, let's see, so, on, let's see, on the top right here, that's the northeast, Stephanie can point out the Belmont Arms, so that's actually an existing apartment building. It's pretty old, it's been there for kind of a long time, and...
Yep, right here, right there.
As far as I used to know, when my friend lived there when I was like 20, it actually was kind of reasonably priced and landlord, like, treated them great. So I don't know what could possibly happen there, but it looks like there's probably some, some room for development there.
I think with, so here, the opportunity is, the sewer extends to here. I think that's where the dentist's office is, but it can, it can be extended beyond that. So if a developer came in and wanted to develop multifamily housing there, you know, we'd have some conversations about how that sewer could be brought down there. And we would expect, if the town, if, when the town adopts the zoning, that we would be able to continue to avail ourselves, and the state would look favorably on, you know, funding for such a project. But, a large portion of this open space you see there is septic for the housing.
Yep, and that, kind of the large Y in the middle, that's kind of the commercial industrial use, they create like a, like a, you know, aluminum cable and ductwork, yeah, so. You might see a truck pulling in out of there now and then, but that's what's back there. So, you know, so we have this area, it's kind of, it's already kind of zoned for some multifamily or mixed use by a special permit. Kind of the, the mixed use provision is made a little bit, maybe not financially feasible for all that much development to actually happen. So, you know, that, in addition to the sewer and, you know, proximity to the highway, it's not necessarily really close to a train station, but we already have this area kind of slated for development, or some sort of improvement at least, so that's why we included this area.
And I'd just like to add, again, it's near a lot of commercial uses, so of course, you know, the business owners could benefit from more people who are living here, as well as people could take advantage of that. And then, the industrial park offers work opportunities.
Yeah, there's Stone Hill, which is, still remains open for the public to walk through, as well as sheep pastures, really not that far down the road. Any questions here?
Large parcel in the middle, along the bottom and the right, is that water?
That's a wetland area.
And, yeah, that's wetland, and the formula does exclude the wetlands, so, you know, considers that as far as the calculation goes. Okay, now we have Washington North, this is up at the northern end of 138 Washington Street, Roach Brothers Plaza, in addition to CBS in the front, there's a couple kind of retail stores there on the northern extremity, and you're probably, maybe familiar with those medical buildings, if you could ever had to go to the orthopedist or something. And then across the street are, you know, one's kind of like a residence with like a kind of like semi, like livery right now, and then this one, kennel, and, yeah.
Yeah, okay, these, these units are townhouses.
Yes, right, those are townhouses.
And yes, there's the kennel right here, or a dog daycare, yep.
So, so, you know, those across the street.
Someone using...
Looks like there's, you know, there are some wetlands in, you know, in the back of, back here, and then over to the right too, so. This area, we've kind of had as our third option, but given the proximity to the Stockton train, and the, maybe a limited potential for development, now we decided to include this and maybe take some pressure off the Foundry section.
Yep. The other is, you can see, this is the MBTA right-of-way, and if the South Coast Rail ever did come down through Easton, then we would be an MBTA community, and the town would need a district within the half-mile. So this would, this would start to get us there. It wouldn't be, the district has to be...
Yeah, so actually, when the state thought the train was still going to come through here, like, this was the, what was that, what was that zone called? It was the, it was like the transit-oriented development, right?
Yes, yes.
This is the area we chose for the, for the transit-oriented development, because this is where the train station would have gone, you know, had that happened. Any more questions on, on the zones? That's really, yeah, that's pretty much...
Yeah, I think the next is just what I like to...
You don't have too much on the slide wise, I can click through if you want.
Yeah, I just want to, so, this is available on our website, we have a webpage dedicated to the MBTA zoning, and this is just, it kind of, it's an outline of how these districts were selected and why, how they met the goals.
So if we just flip back and we look at the actual potential units that we have here, that shows how we have a bit of flexibility to cut on a whole zone, or to reduce, each zone has to be a certain area, so we can't just like, make like, kind of pick and choose lots here and there across town, but at the same time, we have a lot of flexibility, and we're definitely not going to go with anything that would look like the sum of these, these numbers.
Yep.
So, is the, the idea that the town will vote on one of them to...
So, I'm going to talk about...
Sorry.
The upcoming, no, that's an excellent question, that leads right into the upcoming Planning Board meetings. So the Planning Board is meeting on February 12th to review and finalize the districts. So based on all the input and feedback that has been received, as part of these presentations and the public meetings that the board has been holding, they will decide what those final districts should look like. And that is what then will be, they'll, they'll have some final public comment on February 26th on those districts, and then, at their next meeting on March 12th, they will have deliberations, close the hearing, and then vote.
Yep, so if you already have some ideas, or you know some people that might feel strongly on, you know, in support or against this, probably a good time to, for them to tell us what they think now.
So, just to clarify, because I had the chance to hear this before on the United States Committee, so I, as I understood it, then, if you go back to the three zones, you need to hit the 50 and 900 unit, so it couldn't be just Washington Belmont, or just Washington North.
Correct.
It needs to be some combination of these three, if not, not necessarily all three, but...
Like, Eastman right now would, would hit it. However, if, because of the strong sentiment that has been coming from some of the Furnace Village residents, there is likely to be a reduction in that. So then, if that dropped below 50 acres, and it dropped below the 913, which it would if you pulled out any of the larger parcels, then you absolutely would have to pair that up with one of the other districts. If you're just going with the two districts, you, you need the two.
Do these figures take into account that subtraction of the wetlands, or is that...
Yes.
Okay, so it's already accounted for.
We've run these through the model, and we've actually sent, because the state, once you adopt your zoning, then they review it again and they approve it. So they strongly encourage that you send them your pre-adoption proposal for the district, so they can take a look at it. But it takes them 90 days to review it. So, back in November, what Easton did was, we sent them these three districts, and just, we want them to look at each one individually, and let us know if there are any glaring errors or, you know, if our calculations were correct. And that will give us a very strong comfort level with any district that we might amend.
But they don't really give us a chance to, you know, if we wanted to make a few changes and say, oh, all right, well, if we go with like this permutation, we can't just go to the state and say, can you run this through your model and give us a call, you know, in two weeks, right?
Right.
The town staff has done some of that work, and, you know, could pay some consultants, but we're trying to avoid that. There are some other resources available, but we're not, we're trying not to get into that, that mode where we just keep rerunning the models based on someone else, a new person's opinion until we get, you know, a little bit closer here.
And you can't limit it to over 55 housing, right?
Correct, correct. And, and there is a real need for over 55, for people who want to age in place in Easton. So we'd hope that any development would also meet that need as well.
Have you all discussed any pros and cons of approving more than the minimum, right? You've identified more than the minimum.
Yeah, we have some people that probably think we should do, should have done three times as much 10 years ago, right? But, and then other people think that we've already done too much, so, yeah, we have discussed that.
I, so, most zoning in Massachusetts requires a two-thirds, two-thirds vote. Multifamily zoning does, especially by, multifamily by right does not, it's a simple majority. The goal here is to get this passed. And that's one of the things where, Alicia, did you have...
No, the, the vote is not to agree to zoning, because it's law, the vote is to choose these three zones in particular.
Yes, yes.
The recommended.
Excellent, excellent way to say that.
Although, by not choosing a zone, we'd more or less be voting for not to abide by the law, yeah.
And we don't understand, we know some of the ramifications, but not all of them. Because we don't know what the Attorney General will do, we just know that we won't have extra money.
Right, and I've been told she has issued an order to Milton, who is one of the other communities, that I think has vocally said, we're not going to move forward with this.
But either way, I'm going to kind of go back on your question, if we were to, you know, I mean, consider, you know, some options or some ideas for like, maybe more multifamily or more different, you know, different housing variety in Easton, we probably wouldn't have done it the same way that the state decided to do it when they, you know, attached this to a kind of an economic development, kind of tied to COVID, right? So, but...
To build on Jen's question, can you share what the pro would be to choose one that is larger than the allocated amount?
Let me give a short answer? Or do you want to get a...
Are you going to vote?
I can't vote.
So, let's see, a pro to go higher? What would, what would someone possibly say, maybe a planner or someone? I think maybe people would say that would promote some, some goals for, you know, diverse housing, to make our housing more available to different groups, who might, right now, might have a difficulty finding or maintaining homes in Easton. And, you know, we think of it that way in a way, right? And then another way you think, okay, well, how many people do I know that maybe had a change in their family circumstance, that they found that Avalon was like the perfect like fit for them, right? So, it's, it's not like ever that easy just to, to say that, like, a multifamily isn't, you know, it's not good to have a certain amount of multifamily, because, when we know people, would you ever go to them and say, like, in their face, like, you know, I hate that multifamily development, you know, you are able to stay in town, right? So, there's a lot of levels here, right? And, you know, whether you've only been here for five years or your whole life, you know, we've seen a lot of change, but we know we have to kind of adapt along, you know, with that change, you know, to keep our town a great place for everyone, right? That's what we kind of all do, have tried to do here.
So just a question that I think will come up as this goes to town meeting. So obviously, from a selecting a zone and impact of the school, since the schools have been centralized, and we don't have to worry about, you know, which, which elementary school is going to absorb more students, so that's one consideration. The decision that the town has made to add to the public safety presence, and the way that we're dealing with the new police station, all of that, are they comfortable that any of these zones, they'll be able to sufficiently reach and accommodate if there were to be more people in that zone?
They are.
Great.
We're holding a special meeting with the Furnace Village Neighborhood Collaborative next week. At least Chief Boone will be there, I'm expecting that Chief Partridge will as well, we've talked about...
Alexander. Chief Alexander.
Oh my goodness. Sorry. Please forgive me, Justin. That's, I think that's why he tells me to call him Justin, because I never get that wrong. So, I mean, they respond, when you have a large congregation of people, it's going to look like they're responding more frequently, and they are, because you have more people in a single location.
Yeah, I'm not really sure what they are with the ladder trucks, that had been kind of a discussion in the past, where we had to call in either Mansfield or Brockton for the ladder truck, for the, some of the taller...
I don't remember, I know that through the capital budget, they, some of their equipment needs have definitely met. Yep. And as far as the school enrollment goes, I do have a slide, but what I can tell you is, and these numbers came from the, from the school, that it's 101 students who live in one of the newer multifamily apartment buildings, which is Avalon Shovel... which is Avalon, Shovel Works, 244 Main Street, and the Queeset on, Queeset Commons, which is our 40-yard district. That.
If you have comments on this one, too, that would be great, because sometimes it's hard to get the.
So 103 students that live in the multifamily communities were new to the Easton public school system.
I think the bottom line statement on that is always, we have to do it anyway, right? I mean, this is the reality. This is important to be able to create this housing.
What if we ask you, though?
It's more as a question.
Does this chat like pretty much write to you? I mean, would you, like, is this something that, like, the numbers have worked out that way over the last 10 years or so?
It does, and our enrollment overall is increasing, and we are in the business of educating kids, and we love bringing kids into the district.
It keeps your community vibrant.
It's fabulous for the town, the schools.
Yeah. It's a fair housing issue when you try to zone against bringing students into, and fair education, so.
So how about when you're planning for a new school, like, what kind of growth, what kind of growth do you anticipate, do you plan for? Like, is it the next 10, 20 years, or how do you do that?
Yes, actually, the MSBA is very strict about how that happens. And so when we did that with the Blanche Ames Elementary School, they actually have a very detailed algorithm that they use. They go into birth rates, mortality rates, transients, you know. And so they did predict that we were going to have an increase in enrollment, which we are seeing now. And that's a fantastic thing. And in terms of funding, we get more funding from the state for every student that comes in. So it's not as though each student is a drain on the town per se. We receive more funding for each student that we have. So it's a great thing for the district.
Someone the other day, and was positing this as a question and something for consideration, but they said, so, yeah, this is another state unfunded mandate. Well, it's not, because whatever gets built gets taxed. It generates revenue. So, yeah. So one of the things we'd like to ask, again, we've got a website with all kinds of information. People can call me. I keep offering, Peter. We would love for you to talk to your friends, your families, let them know this is going on, whether they think they love it or hate it. We're asking that people become educated on what it is and what it means and what it doesn't mean. And we really hope that we have your support at town meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah.
I'm going to close this down in case any trouble with the meeting.
Just close out the presentation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, great.
Thanks. I think as thorough as I promised.
It's nice to see live people when you stare out into the screen. I do occasionally have one of those TV dinners, you know, when they're all facing the screen.
Thank you very much for the presentation and all the information. So next up on the agenda, we have two retirements. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. Two very experienced, beloved educators. The first, and both are unfortunately unable to attend this evening, but the first is Colleen Luckovich. She was hired in 2007 as a guidance counselor for OA. Over the years, she's been the advisor of the peer mediation group. In 2010, she received professional teaching status. After 17 years in Easton, she plans to retire on August 27th. The guidance department is obviously integral to both of our schools, and they provide a tremendous service above and beyond what we remember guidance counselors to have done in the past. So to lose one with such a great amount of experience is obviously very sad. But at the same time, we're always really happy for our colleagues that are able to retire in health and their families. And we wish her well, of course. Diane Ross was hired in 1998 as a learning specialist at what was the Richardson School. She transferred to Center School as a grade one teacher in 2002, and of course, is currently at Blanche Ames. Diane has served on the mentor planning committee. She received professional status in 2005. After 26 years in Easton, she plans to retire on July 13th. And as a former high school teacher, I have a great deal of respect for our very lower elementary school teachers. She, even in her last year, has a tremendous amount of energy and enthusiasm with kids and is just wonderful with them. I'm sure anybody who's had experience with her as a teacher knows just how great she is and what a great loss she will be for the district as well. So we congratulate them both, well-earned in both cases. We will miss them for sure. We look forward to celebrating them in June and believe they both have letters in your packet for you to read.
Okay, so I will read the first letter and take our vote and then move on to the second. So I'm writing to let you know that I plan to retire on my 65th birthday, August 27th, 2024. It was a wonderful opportunity for me to start a second career as a school counselor at age 45, beginning with my internship at Oliver Ames and to return as a counselor two years later. The past 18 years have been an honor and a privilege, not always easy and never boring. I have enjoyed the many Easton students and families I have gotten to know over the years, and I have truly appreciated having the good fortune to work with such dedicated teachers, administrators, paraprofessionals, support staff, school nurses, school psychologists, and adjustment counselors, and especially the school counselors in the guidance department. The current team in our office is the finest group of professionals I have ever known. They pitch in to help any student, family, and staff member, and we've supported each other through every crisis and celebrated every success. It would be hard to leave this job and these colleagues. Thank you all for your support and kindness over the years, and thank you for the friendship and laughter. I will miss OA and everyone in it. Colleen. Okay, so before we vote, does anybody have any, any words they'd like to say?
Yes.
Okay.
You knew I was going to say, yes. Colleen's great. She will definitely be missed at the guidance department at Oliver Ames. I've worked with her personally and just find her to be just a respectful and kind person. You know, she may hit that hurdle that she's got to get over and do what needs to be done, but she's very professional and very giving to her students and her colleagues, as she says in her letter. So she definitely will be missed, and good luck, because she, retirement's great, Colleen. I know you're not on, but it's great.
And I do as well. We had the pleasure of receiving her support when one of my kids was going through a rough period, as they do in high school. And she is truly not only there for the kid, but also the family. And has been super incredible at navigating the process for families during many challenging years, including the COVID years. So she will desperately be missed, but much appreciate all of the work that she's done to help everyone.
And Colleen, like, if you watch this, I'm getting reclamped, so I'm going to leave it as I echo their sentiments and you know what you mean to me. So thank you. You have been a lifeline to my family, and I really, really appreciate that. So I hope you get to, you know, come back and listen to these comments. All righty. Would somebody like to make a motion? Oh, Jackie, did you have anything before we move on?
No, I'm all sat down. Thanks.
All right, great. Okay, so would anybody like to make a motion to accept the retirement of Colleen Luckovich with regret?
So move to Luca.
Can I get a second? Okay, roll call vote?
To Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes?
Persio, yes.
Okay. Our next letter. Dear Dr. Cabral, it is with mixed emotions that I write to inform you of my intention to retire at the end of this school year. My official retirement date will be July 13th, 2024. It has been my privilege to teach at three schools in Easton. I began my career here as a learning specialist at HH Richardson in 1998. After four years in that position, I began teaching first grade at Center School. It was a perfect fit for me. I will conclude my career here at Blanche Ames. I have been fortunate to work with teams of supportive, hard-working, and fun-loving colleagues throughout my career. I am grateful for the students and families that I have had the opportunity to work with. I will greatly miss my teaching years. As you know, teaching is more than a full-time job, and the time has come to dedicate more of my time to my family. I thank you for your support and wish the Easton School Committee continued success in the years ahead. Sincerely, Diane Ross. Okay, does anybody have any comments? Nancy?
I told you, one day, there's going to be a day that I won't know who these people are. Diane's a great teacher. The school, the school system will miss her, but Blanche Ames also. She's just like dedicated and kind, just a wonderful, wonderful teacher. And I wish her the best, because it is, teaching is more than a full-time job. And now she'll be able to be more full-time with her family, so that's good. Congratulations.
Any other committee members have any comments?
So I do, I, none of my kids had, Mrs. Ross, they weren't at Center School. But friends who were at Center School, I heard many, many good things and about how it was just a really, a great start to their kids' school careers to have, Mrs. Ross. So thank you for all that you do, and we wish you luck in your retirement. So I'll make a motion to accept the retirement of Diane Ross with regret. Can I get a second?
And roll call vote?
To Luca, yes.
Wiseman, yes.
Starr, yes?
Persio, yes.
All right, next on the agenda is the discussion and vote to approve a lease agreement with Southeast Rehabilitation and Skilled Care Center. Dr. Cabral?
We've had a couple of meetings now. Southeast Rehabilitation and Skilled Care Center had reached out to use one of our schools as an evacuation site in the event of an extreme emergency, most likely in an evening, because they would primarily choose to evacuate to another skilled nursing facility, which would be open during the day. But they do have to have contingency plans. And as they are in Easton, and Richardson Olmsted is an emergency shelter site for the town. Anyway, I did recommend that the school would be Richardson Olmsted. We talked to the CERT team in town who would be willing to assist should that become a necessity. We also have the Easton staff that is on call during any potential emergent situations, willing to assist as well. What we have done since the last meeting is had the town's legal counsel put together an agreement that would be a transfer agreement with the center in the event they did need to vacate their premises. I will note that there are at least two areas that reference patients, reference students, and it should be patients. And we can fix that. We're too used to dealing with contracts that say students. But other than that, we are looking for input or questions that you might have. I did send it to the center for their review. They are in agreement with it as is. But of course, as the school committee, it is up to you to determine if you would like any additional information or omitted information or clarifying information added. But it did go through council, and it's here this evening for your review and possible vote, depending if you want any changes to it.
Chica, can you explain further, because it's not burning, why this couldn't happen during the day?
It certainly could happen during the day. For example, the relatively recent fire at the hospital where they all had to be evacuated. However, because it is a rehabilitation center, their preference and their first evacuation site are to actually separate patients out to different nursing and rehabilitation centers, which have full staffing during the day and most likely could take their patients during the day. And they also would be able to contact family members for patients that don't need to go to another facility, but could go home with a family member. In the evening, that gets a little bit more complicated. They don't have a full staff at the rehabilitation center. Family members are more difficult to find. So they're really, it could happen during the day in the very most extreme circumstances. But the most, the most likely scenario where it might be that we are needed to provide a space until they could be picked up or transferred elsewhere would be in an evening situation where other skilled facility centers are closed.
So in that rare circumstance that it could happen during the day, is it written in the contract that it, is that they could come to the school when there is students at the school?
Yes, but we are able to designate the specific area or areas that they go to.
Right, the gym, the cafeteria.
Exactly, or just the gymnasium, or, you know, depending on how many patients. So it's in here, it is captured in the contract that we are able to designate the spaces where we would put them based on the needs of the school at any given time. Yes, absolutely. Now, if it's a power situation or a weather-related situation, if they needed to evacuate, they would be transferred to Richardson Olmsted anyway, because it is the larger, other than Frothingham, it's the larger emergency site in town. So they would be transferred there anyway, just by nature of the fact that they're in Easton.
Anyone could be transferred there.
Anyone, yes, in addition to other residents in town. Which is why we have, through the CERT team, we have access to cots. We have access, our food service can provide food if necessary. There's a shower at Richardson Olmsted and a generator. Not every school has that. Which is why the town has designated Richardson Olmsted as an emergency site.
So I had a question. I did not, and I was reading this at night, so I might have missed it. I did not see like a termination clause. So I saw that it would start on, potentially in January as soon as we sign it, but I did not see how long it lasts.
There, we can, there is. I didn't highlight where it is. I will just.
Page four, thank you.
Yes, so it's sections 11, sections 11 and 4.
So we have the right to terminate, but is there a natural end date and renewal date to this, is my question? Like, is this in perpetuity until we ask to terminate it? Or is this like a multi-year and then you would renew it and refresh it item, is my question.
This is.
I think it's evergreen.
Annually. I think this is annually. I think it's for an annual review.
I don't, I didn't see any language here.
I did not see that, and I guess part of my question comes to because this is, because we're using this site partially because it is the emergency evacuation site. If we ever were to change that, obviously, we would just have to go through what appears to be the language in here to change it. But I didn't know if this was something where we would want to set a review period on it.
It may not be annually, because it does say that we can cancel it at any time.
Yeah, right. I knew there was the cancellation.
Without cause, and so that would seem to be contradictory.
Okay. So the assumption is we could cancel or if we needed to so alter it at any time, but we, otherwise, it's evergreen?
Yes, but, I mean, you can put any, you're assisting, you can put any contingency on it. Just, again, to clarify, if it's sort of a disaster situation for the town, they're going to be transported there anyway, whether we have this agreement or not. This is more so if they have a building situation that isn't really a town emergency. But if it's, you know, a snow event, heating event, large issue, they would be transported to Richardson Olmsted. It would pretty much supersede this.
Mm-hmm, that makes sense.
So I think maybe while we're together, if we wanted to get this in shape to vote on tonight with language updates, if we want to all maybe agree on those updates. So I'm seeing in section two, that's where we have the first reference to student, teachers, therapists, invitees, and guests.
therapists, invitees, and guests. And then in section five, paragraph one, line three, we have a reference to agents, employees, invitees, participants, and guests. And that reference is repeated two paragraphs down for the, the end of the fourth line going into the fifth line. And I don't recall seeing, um, any other language. Dr. Cabral, did you, I think you said you'd seen, you thought students may have popped in a couple of times?
Reference to parties other than patients, therapists, employees. Guests or invitees may, maybe family members coming to retrieve patients. So I'm not sure if we, if we wanna get rid of that, uh...
Yeah, so I think...
Make that more clear.
Yeah, so I think employees, yes. Employees, for sure, yes, okay. Invites, doesn't, that seems more like a performing arts sort of reference.
Right, I, I'm thinking more guests are, as family members, not invitees.
Yeah, yep, so, yeah, so I'm looking at the language at like, on page five, the agents, employees, invitees, participants, and guests. So I think we can strike invitees and participants, and it could be patients, employees, and guests.
I would say instead of guests, put family members.
Caregivers?
Caregivers.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe not family, but...
Caregivers.
Yeah.
Or emergency contacts, or what have you.
Right, right, right.
I mean, I think we just...
Rather than guests.
Yeah.
Okay. Could caregivers be confused with the employee caregivers? No?
Patient caregivers?
Oh, that would be an employee.
That sounds even more like an employee.
Patient caregiver?
I don't know what terminology they use in their contract. I would think that whatever their contract is when someone signs there, which may be like responsible parties, or emergency contact.
So I think an employee of, of the facility...
Yep.
Would be a health care provider. A family member is a caregiver.
In paragraph three, about halfway down, it says, for patients to wait to be picked up by caregivers.
Okay.
A health care provider, though, because it's all of the cafeteria staff.
Yeah, but it's still a, a...
We'll have a pharma today later.
I like patients, employees, and caregivers.
As well, if I can explain specifically what you're describing.
Okay.
And see if there's a legal bent on any of those terms in particular.
Okay.
I, I think that would make sense, and I think it would make sense to, I personally would suggest that we wait until we get the updated language, because this could apply when students were in the building. And I just think that having a comfort level, that we've gotten to the right, appropriate modeling of who might be in the building with the students. I know that they're taking responsibility for supervising those individuals while they're there, but I, I think just from a comfort level, in that circumstance. Granted, that may just be a public emergency anyway, but just on that gray area, between if there's something specific to their building, it might be better to just have that language updated and reviewed.
So maybe, would we be comfortable with something like what we suggested, patients, employees, and caregivers subject to council, you know, legal counsel's opinion? And if they're okay with it, we can proceed with finalizing without another, without another vote?
Do you wanna add in a termination date, or, or a, a thing that says we're gonna look at this every year?
Or every couple of years? I mean, I just, do you wonder?
I mean, do we need to have that? That's all I'm asking.
I, I think, and maybe, I don't know, Jackie, if you wanna jump in here, I know you've got some experience, but I don't wanna put you on the spot. I'm, I'm comfortable with the termination language as is, because it doesn't imply, my concern is that if, I, I think when you add, like, you make it an annual thing, it sort of implies that, it's sort of the difference between like if you were in housing, right? If you're signing a lease, or if you, you're doing something that's just kind of month to month, that can be terminated at any time, like, do you know what I mean?
We can have, if, if you're looking for an internal review to get an update, have there been incidents, have there been problems, we can do that as a course of...
Yeah.
Practice.
Yeah.
And not be required for them to participate and attend in the contract, unless you're looking for a conversation with them annually.
My consideration, actually, I think Jackie might have come off mute, so I'll give her a moment.
No, I was just gonna say, I agree with what Jenna had said, I'm, I'm comfortable with the termination language as is.
Thanks, Jackie. It could be a matter of practice. My, my thought process was that if the center were to change hands, or have a material change in circumstance, have a significant expansion, anything that we felt was somehow going to have an impact, that would be the reason why it would want us to, or a larger than number of expected incidents, or a different approach to incidents than we expected. That would be my thought process. So perhaps we just have that as a matter of practice, that we periodically confirm that there has not been any change, and that we periodically review whether there have been a large number of incidents.
I agree.
And then we don't have to worry about it, and have the right to terminate. I would just, you know, so those are the things that could sit out there for six years, and then all of a sudden, we're surprised by, you know, oh, we forgot their large expansion, and, you know, changes in, in circumstance.
I think that makes sense, yeah. Yep. But, and, and again, I think with the, the termination without cause with 90 days, makes it so that if something came up that we were, you know, not comfortable with, we wouldn't have to wait for the expiration of a contract to make a change.
There is also a seven-day period for breach, or in the case of an emergency, immediately upon hand-delivering the letter.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, the hope is that they never have to use it for their own well-being of their, of their patients. But obviously, this is an extra consideration against the fact that they have, that would be the emergency center anyway, so.
And then, just a question of, I guess, probably just form and practice, I, I know that they were, were very accommodating with signing this as is, obviously, we'd need to be re-signed.
Well, yeah, I kept, I kept draft on there, just to be sure, yeah.
And then upon, before every, before everything is signed, we would get those certificates of insurance, right, for all of the liability, et cetera. Because normally, we see those in the packet, but normally, we're at a signature-ready stage, so, okay. All right. So then, are we, are we comfortable with voting on this today with that update that we had discussed to participants, employees, and caregivers subject to legal review?
And the certificates?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
We should vote on it when it's corrected.
Okay, you wanna wait? Is there any urgency to getting it?
Not for us.
Right.
Obviously have a sense of urgency, but not for the school department.
Okay. All right, so we can, we can schedule it again then for the next meeting, and hopefully have a, a good final version put together. Do you have anything else?
Just because in, in the meantime, if there was an emergency, they would come to R O anyway, so.
If it's a town emergency?
Yes.
If it was a snowstorm, power outage type of emergency, but if they had a fire in their building, they would not be able to come to R O.
Okay.
Our next meeting is two weeks.
Yes. Okay, all right, all right, so no vote on that tonight. Next up is the ADA Transportation Contract Amendment with possible vote to approve. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. Director Davidson is here. We have a transportation contract that, due to the initial contract, the town accountant and myself were authorized to sign because of the amount. We have had a significant increase in need recently, due to some transportation difficulties, and we have needed to rely on other vendors. So at this time, we're looking to increase that. I'll let Director Davidson provide any details, or answer any questions you may have about that.
Thank you, Dr. Cabral. The initial contract was for $24,900, was under the $25,000. Mrs. Pruitt? It was under the $25,000 limit that you'd have to go out for bid, as this is a service for students with special education needs, students with disabilities, students in DCF custody, or out of district placements. We do not have to go out for bid, but the current contract is under what we're predicting for the year total. We were able to work with ADA Transportation to actually lower some of our transportation costs that we were using other vendors for, so that's why we're here tonight to look to increase that overall cost in the contract, and actually remove the $24,900 cap.
So we would be replacing, using them to replace other vendors that were higher in terms of cost?
Correct.
Well, not for that purpose. We have other vendors that do not have the capacity to take on our increased need.
Got it.
I'm, I'm sorry, is, is this only for students with special, for special services that, like students with disabilities, or is this, like, instead of using Lucini for some things?
Well, we utilize Lucini for special education also, so it, it is, in some cases, if they cannot provide a service, we have another vendor. But we have also had an increase in McKinney-Vento, which is our, our students in DCF custody or homeless students. And so we, that wasn't part of our original contract with our transportation vendors. We, there's no way of predicting a spike in that, and so they don't have the capacity to handle our needs at this time.
So it's not like if...
We have to augment our contract.
So it's not like if, you know, the driver for bus 10 doesn't show up for work one day, and there's no bus?
I don't think we use ADA for that at all. In a, in an emergency, we don't have a bus for a sport or something. We, we put out a huge net, and we have reached out to, I think I mentioned before, up and down the East Coast, as far as we possibly can to try to find. It's a, it's a statewide problem, transportation services right now. We've used coaches, we've used fans, we've used everything we can, and we now have more contracts with more vendors, small contracts with multiple vendors. But ADA seems to have the capacity that, you know, we wanna keep it to the single vendors if we can, and they have been able to absorb a, a good amount of our need. And so we plan to, and, for reasonably, reasonably, and so we plan to continue utilizing them, but it's going to be more than our initial presumption of cost.
And you are happy with their quality of service and responsiveness?
Up to date, yes. They've done a phenomenal job supporting our students and families.
Haven't gotten any complaints yet.
Okay. I apologize for not noticing and asking for this before, but I don't know that the committee, I don't think we saw and voted on the original contract.
You may not have.
Okay, so can we get, because now that we're signing an amendment to it, I'd like to see the actual contract.
Sure, of course.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, all righty. So I know that this is, I know that we've, we've seen them show up in the warrant report for payment, so I know that we are actively using them and need to approve payments, so...
And the town reviewed the contract and signed off as well.
Okay.
It wasn't, it wasn't, you know, one person.
Right, right, of course, yep. So knowing that, knowing that, you know, there, there are, there are bills that need to be paid, I'm, I'm comfortable voting on the amendment, but I would like the original agreement to be shared with the committee. I, I don't know if any other committee members, though, are uncomfortable with that, and would want to look at the whole committee, the whole original agreement before signing the amendment, so open to any thoughts on that? No? You're fine?
Okay.
All righty, so any other questions or comments then, before we move to a vote? All righty, so would somebody like to make a motion to approve the amendment to the ADA Transportation Contract?
So move, DeLuca.
You get a second?
Second, Loomis.
Second, Weisman.
Sorry, Jackie. And roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Weisman, yes.
Starr, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Persia, yes.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Davidson. All righty, so next up is vote, voting to approve the meeting minutes from January 4th. So we have regular meeting minutes and executive session. So, starting with the regular meeting minutes, does anybody have any comments, questions, or suggested edits? Does anybody need time to review, or is everybody willing to review? Ahead of time? Okay. Okay. Then can I get a motion to approve the minutes, the regular meeting minutes from January 4th?
So move, DeLuca.
Okay.
I was gonna do it.
Can I get a second?
Second, Loomis.
Roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes. Sorry.
Weisman, yes.
Starr, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Persia, yes.
Great, okay. And, let's see, so the executive session minutes from January 4th. Does anybody want to hold these for review in a future executive session?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All righty then, so, we need to vote that, right? Okay, all right, so I'll make a motion then to hold the executive session meeting minutes from January 4th for review.
Second, Persia.
Okay. Fine, we did it. All right, and roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Weisman, yes.
Starr, yes?
Loomis, yes.
Persia, yes.
Okay, great, all righty. And do we still have Marvel?
I don't, she's a loser.
Okay, all right, so, if Marvel rejoins, we will have her give her student update. Actually, I'm just going to check and see.
Was she at a meet?
Yes, so she's at a school event right now, our, our wonderful multitasking.
She's so dedicated.
Student representative, and, yep, so was on earlier and unable to give an update, so we will catch up on the update next time. So then, next up is the schedule of payments, and so since the committee last met, we, let's see, the committee has approved invoices, 048S, zero, sorry, warrants, 048S, 049S, and there is one more that will be coming your way.
Sounds good.
And next up, our quarterly budget update. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you, Director. Star Jefsky is here with her quarterly update. You have the handouts in your packet. You're not showing slides, right? You are showing slides, okay. And she has slides, and Mrs. Pruitt is setting that up for her.
Do we wanna move?
We do, she has...
Are the slides the same that are in our packet?
They are, but that is how the audience is viewing them.
Oh, we need to get out of the way? Gotcha, okay. All right.
And I'm actually gonna stay up here with Ms. Jefsky, if you have questions or...
Okay. Good evening. I'm Andrea Starjewski, Finance Director, and tonight, I'm proud to present our Q2 Quarterly Budget Update alongside Dr. Lisa Cabral, Superintendent. So, next slide, please. So tonight, we'll begin with an overview of key terms. We'll also go through a refresher on our 2020-24 adopted budget highlights, and some visuals to demonstrate where we are at budget-wise for our fiscal year 2024, Q2, which is December 31st of 2023. Next slide, please. And then, I... And then I will have key terms with each of my budget presentations. I will not highlight all of these, but you'll hear them throughout different budget presentations and our fiscal year 25 budget process. So appropriation, the definition is what would be considered budget funds, which are set aside by the school committee for a specific use within our fiscal year cycle. And that brings us to fiscal year. So our fiscal year is the timeframe in which we conduct business, the timeframe in which we evaluate budget and our actual expenses. For Eastern Public Schools, this is July 1st to June 30th of each year. The number of the fiscal year is represented by the calendar year in which the fiscal year ends. So, for example, our current fiscal year spans from July 1st of 2023 to June 30th of 2024. So the current fiscal year we are in is fiscal year 2024. And then also, as you'll hear continually, our operating definition. So that refers to our budget for our annual appropriation of funds, for our ongoing program costs. That'll include salaries and wages, materials and supplies, purchases of services, et cetera. Next slide, please. So here we have our 2024 adopted highlights. This is a reminder of where we arrived at for our fiscal year 2024 adopted budget. So we had a 3% increase, which was about $1.3 million over fiscal year 23, which was awarded by the town. And our overall adopted budget that we're working with for fiscal year 24 is a little over $47 million. Below the chart for this slide, we also included a snapshot from our April 2023 budget presentation, which demonstrates where we're at with our budget target. For the current fiscal year, we're in the reactive and essential category. And the definition of that means that we are currently providing staff or, and our resources, which is only as a reaction to a current need or mandate. This may not fully satisfy the need or mandate. And I do have a couple of positions, or several positions as well, that were part of our fiscal year 24 budget, just as examples here. Next slide, please. Thank you. So this is one of the first visuals that we have. So this slide represents Q2 2024, which once again, that's 1231 2023 versus Q2 of 2023, which is 1231 2022. So all the fiscal year activity from July 1st through December, but we're looking at it from a year-over-year perspective. So the yellow shaded area on the pie chart represents our actual expenditures year-to-date, which is about 18.5 million. And then the green slice on the pie chart, so to speak, is what remains for fiscal year 24, which is about $28.5 million. And then just as overall comparison, this represents that we've spent about 40% of our overall total budget. And then compared to last year, same time, we are at about 38%. So not too far off from where we were same time, same period last year. Next slide, please. Thank you. So this next slide depicts visuals for different categories within our accounting system. So within our general ledger, we have different categories that break down the different types of expenses that are included in our budget. So we start with overall salaries and wages, which is named for namesake. We have purchases of services. And then that category includes special services tuition, transportation, other contract services, and utilities. We also have materials and supplies, named for namesake. And we have a smaller category, I think it's the red shade on the screen, it's very, very small compared to overall budget of other charges and expenses. And so within that category, that consists of things such as postage, conferences, registrations, fringe benefits, and unemployment insurance. And then just to highlight, some of the major components that we're seeing as of 1231 2023 versus 1231 2022, we'll start with the highest category, which is salaries and wages, the green part or pie slice. That was about, or is about a 5% increase year-over-year. So that's about $695,000. And overall, we've been tracking our changes in salaries and wages, just as we had changes in quarter one for this presentation and overview. The overall increase is due to various lane changes we have with our employees, new positions added, and contractual obligations such as our various MOAs that we've agreed to as a district. Our second highest category, as far as overall change year-over-year, includes our purchases of services category. And that actually includes about a 10% increase year-over-year, or $294,000 that orange shaded section of the pie slice. There are several factors as to why we're at a 10% increase year-over-year. One of those factors is that we have had special services cost increase associated with our out-of-district students. So that will include both tuition and transportation costs. But we are also experiencing transportation cost increases district-wide related to our large bus contracts. And even as we highlighted earlier today, our McKinney Vento transportation for our students. For the next category, for the, a smaller increase for materials and supplies, there was overall change in about $141,000 year-over-year. I'm not highlighting or kind of drilling down into that, it's not as material. And then the smallest category, the other charges and expenses, there's about a $2,000 difference year-over-year. Next slide, please. So this slide actually is a breakdown, once again, how our accounting software breaks down our overall expenditures by location. So we have our four building locations, Oliver Ames, East Middle, Blanche Ames, and Richardson Olmsted. But we also have a category that is titled "systemwide" and a category that is titled "central admin." The "systemwide" category is not something that is tied to a specific building location, but it's a district-wide particular expense that can contain salaries, utilities, special services, building repairs, improvements, et cetera. And then for central administration, that will have most of the expenses tied to the central administrative building and staff, so salaries, travel, printer maintenance, et cetera. And there's parity in between the location increases for the different categories and then also the previous slide for the breakdown of purchase of services being the largest driver. So in this location comparison, the "systemwide" category is the category with the largest increase. And the driver for that is very similar to the purchase of services. We have a $461,000 increase overall compared to the same time period last year, which is about a 15% increase. And the major drivers, once again, are increased transportation costs and out-of-district costs. And that is basically because our purchase of services category has mostly location, for the system-wide location baked into that. So we're basically looking at the pie being sliced up a couple of different ways, but those two categories overlap. So you'll see parities between the different categories from time to time. And then here, we have the instance of purchase of services, which is overlapping with some of the previous slides presented for the larger changes. Next slide, please. So this slide will continue to demonstrate with each of these budget presentations, but we just wanted to show overall student enrollment distribution. This is a year-over-year comparison, and there should be parity between the different building locations and how our expenses are being allocated as a district. And I just wanted to remind once again that when we compile our budget and budget requests, the funding is based on the needs of each school. The budget is not compiled on a one-size-fits-all-per-pupil-cost basis. Next slide, please. Summary. So overall, this dial metric just is a demonstration of where we are at year-to-date. So through 1231 of 2023, we're at an almost 40% spend-down of the total budget. We are tracking very similarly to where we were in the prior fiscal year. As I pointed out earlier, we were at about 38% the same time and as of 1231 of 2022. And then just a reminder, when we ended Q1 of 2023, we were at an 11, almost an 11% spend-down rate. Just wanted to point that out because our fiscal year spending is cyclical in nature. For each quarter, when we present where we're at budget-wise, what the district spends may vary. Just a prime example, we spend more in utility expenses during the winter months. So you'll see fluctuations from time to time as far as where we're at on the dial for year-to-date budget. And then I end with just some horizon items for our school committee and for the public to consider. We are carefully monitoring all changes that may impact our fiscal year 24 budget and fiscal year 25 budget as we're getting into that process now. But I wanted to bring attention to Governor Healy's 9C budget and earmark reduction. So just to update the school committee and the public, there was a $375 million reduction announced last week to mitigate a projected shortfall of $1 billion in state tax revenue collection. Currently, schools do not, or school districts do not appear to be impacted because education has not been touched in that 9C budget reduction. However, we'll continue to monitor should the projected shortfall change and should the governor decide to pivot. We'll keep you updated. But we are concerned and we will report out as we get through the next budget process or as we present as part of the next budget for fiscal year 25, how those revenue decreases may impact the budget process for us as we're projecting out and presenting to you as a school committee and public. A couple of things we are already aware of includes that we have figures for our minimum aid per pupil. Currently, the estimates are projected that we may receive only $30 per pupil versus our current $60 per pupil. And I believe that's approximately $100,000 impact to our overall budget for next fiscal year. We are also aware of potential out-of-district cost increases for special services. As a reminder, there's a maximum inflation rate factor that is recommended to be applied to special education tuition on an annual basis. Currently, that factor is estimated to be, well, is estimated to be over 4%. And just a reminder, historically, for fiscal year 24, which you are seeing in some of these increased costs for where we're at year-to-date, that factor was 14%. On average, historically, this has been under 2%. 4% is definitely better than 14%, but it still will impact us as we move into next fiscal year budget cycle. And we also have been notified that our entitlement grant, which ties to our Title I grant, is projected to have a decrease in funding allocation of an estimated $140,000 for fiscal year 25. And one last piece of where we're at right now for preliminary budget stages for fiscal year 25, we are currently in process of rolling over our employee, employee position. So basically, rolling all the employees forward to try to project, project out for fiscal year 25. And currently, we already know that our rollover that we're not complete with is already exceeding what the town is estimating that they can bear. And we still have multiple units or groups that we need to roll over in that costing. So we're just trying to prepare ourselves for this budget cycle with some of these things that we see coming up on the horizon. And once again, as things change, we'll report out to school committee and the public as of 331. But we also will keep you apprised of what we're seeing in the process as we get into the next budget cycle for fiscal year 25. And that is all.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions or comments from school committee members?
I, I just wanted to thank you for all of the visuals. They were very helpful.
That's great. So, so Dr. Cabral, can you just remind the committee and the public who may be watching of sort of where you are in the fiscal 25 budget planning process today?
Sure. So we have begun, we have a very participatory process here in the district. We literally reach out to every staff member. We take two, a minimum of two department meetings at every school. The cabinet has met, we had put a presentation together. Almost every school already, I think three out of the four have had their first budget meeting in January. At that meeting, they review the strategic plan that's currently in place and analyze for where their roles and responsibilities are. What shortcomings do we still have? Remember, we're in the last year of that plan before we transfer to a new one? What do they need in order to close those achievement gaps to help students meet their goals? We are focused on operations. We're not focused on capital, which are things, items. We are really honing in on the year-to-year expenses that continue over time. And that is mostly personnel, but it's also technology, software subscriptions. You know, going one-to-one is a blessing in a lot of ways, but it's a lot to maintain. And so what we don't want to do is, is move backwards. And so we're trying to keep up with a procurement plan that keeps us competitive and helps our students to have the best resources possible. So they're working on that, they, they've gone through that process. They revisit the targets. You saw a snippet of the last reactive, which we've been in for the last several years. And then they discuss their needs and determine whether they're reactive, proactive, or strategic. The principals then work with them to prioritize that list of needs based on the data of the school as well as the district in closing the gaps in the strategic plan. Then, at their next meeting in February, they finalize their presentation that the principal will be making to the executive team. In March, the principals each make a comprehensive presentation of the needs of their school, and they help everyone else on the cabinet understand those needs, why they may be pressing this particular year, or why they could wait a year in order to address them if they're the result of a mandate or not meeting needs. Remember, last year, we had a desperate need for English as a second language professionals, some special education needs that needed to be addressed immediately. Once those presentations are made, it's, it's an important part of the process for us because we need to make sure that every administrator in the district understands, as, as Ms. Star Jefsky referenced earlier, we don't do a per-pupil expenditure for each school. Different schools have different needs at different times. And so, you know, we just put in a literacy program at the elementary schools. That was a large expense. Now we need to focus on the needs of other schools. We, because of that, we need everyone to understand that if they're not, if they're putting forward some needs and they're unable to be met in a particular year, that if we move forward with something else, they understand why. They know that it is more pressing at this moment, it's necessary for the achievement of kids, health and welfare, and so forth. If we're able to actually move forward on any of our programming. A couple of other considerations we have that we reminded them about is that our ESTR funds are going to be ending. And so we let them know which positions and programs are part of the ESTR funding that will be need to, to be moved into the operating budget if we wish to maintain them. And also, the end of the ESTR funds and- The reduction of the entitlement grants, thank you, which are going to have an impact on our most vulnerable populations in terms of interventionists, our professionals, and the like. So we need to determine how we're going to minimize some expenses, move some of those people from grants into the operating budget. The executive team then has the responsibility of prioritizing the entire district. And then the process moves backwards. We present that to the principals, principals present that to the staff for a final input, and hopefully that gives us a really good understanding from the people that are, that are doing the work daily on what their needs and mandates are. We're also seeing things like computer science coming as, as mandatory for all students to graduate from high school and other such requirements that while they're marginally proactive right now, they're going to become reactive very soon. And some of them, we cannot incorporate in one year. So we need to have long-term plans for them. We also have a great deal of increased enrollment at the lower elementary grades. And so while we've been tasked with, tasked with providing a level service budget, if you have three full more classrooms of kindergarten students, providing the teachers to, to open up those classrooms is a level service. You're just, you're not providing anything new, you're not developing any programs, you're not progressing in your goals, you just have more bodies. And so we are the most mercurial, other than special education, in our estimations are always kindergarten and preschool because we don't know what children are going to show up, literally. So we're working on that, trying to be as flexible as possible with that.
And then that brings us to the end of March, early April, which is when we make our presentations to the school committee. Hopefully-
Hopefully have a budget that we feel confident we're voting for. We work with the town administrator to make sure it fits into the budget, the projections, which are, as Mr. Darszewski said, 80%, roughly 80% of our budget is personnel. We are finishing up the last couple of smaller collective bargaining unit contracts so that we can have firm numbers for the, for the, we call it rollover number. And without those last couple of ones, we're already exceeded what we're estimated to, to be able to receive from the town if all projections stay static. So it's obviously a great concern, especially when we talk about having to move programs into the operating budget, move positions into the operating budget, just to keep them going. So we're not really looking about any robust growth. We're just looking to maintain as many services as possible. And then, of course, May is town meeting.
So we have two questions. So one is, I know that the school, the school operating budget does not include health insurance costs, but it certainly affects the town's overall budget. So can you, I've, I've heard some pretty astronomical numbers thrown around for projected insurance increases. Do you have the latest estimate on what that is looking, is it 9% or 10% or more?
It's close to 10%. I believe it's 9.6%. And I don't believe we'll have a final number until the end of February, based off of what the town administrator had provided to us.
Right. And so you, you've said it perfectly. While it doesn't come out of our budget per se, it affects the percentage available to us from the town. It's the same pot of money. So it, that's another escalation that we are very concerned about.
Yep. And then second question is, over the years, we've, of course, talked about being a minimum aid district and what that means. And we've done a lot of work to try to, one, fix the formula, but two, work within the formula to get us out of there and into a foundation budget. Do you have any sense, based on increased enrollment and some other, you know, changes that have occurred over the years, if we're, if we're closing that gap?
We're definitely closing the gap. We're still a couple of years out. The major drivers for us are increased enrollment. As part of our prior conversation, we talked about how enrollment is very helpful for us. So increasing overall enrollment, the students making kindergarten free for all students actually increases the amount of money we get from the state. And also vocational programming, which is an area I had a meeting today, a great meeting over at the high school with the career and college readiness department. And, you know, it's something we're really looking to maintain. It sounds counterintuitive that adding something like free full day kindergarten actually is, is a revenue driver for us, but the same is true of the college career readiness program. Chapter 74, which is vocational programming, with that certification, reimbursement from the state is almost double for every student. And I'm not talking about the $30 per pupil expenditure. I'm talking about the per pupil cost of educating a child for the foundation formula.
Okay. Does anybody, Lauren?
So I, I recall last year when free school lunch was put into law. It was, it was free pending funding
Correct.
available for it. Does this impact school lunch?
I, we don't know yet. It is free for the remainder of this year. That is exactly what the law says, pending appropriation for it, which basically means if they have enough money, it's the law, and if they don't have enough money, they don't have to fund it. So we were very hesitant in our excitement about it. As you know, it, it was very close to the school year before it was finalized. It could be the same for next year, which is also a concern because we did project a six-figure deficit if we didn't have the quote unquote free or the federal funding for the food. Because our food service program doesn't run a super profitable program, especially now when we're so grossly understaffed because of the employment issues that really we're facing around the country. We're still having difficulty. They have been able to hire a few people, but we're, we're far from being fully staffed. And the reason that fully staffed is important is because that's when you can offer the specialty meals that students want to buy. That's when you can offer high labor output, like a salad bar or sandwich bar that the students want to buy, à la carte services. That's what generates the refunds. Right. Baking cookies, right. All those things generate the, the, the revenue. And without the revenue, you don't have the people in place. And so it's very tricky. But we do predict that the first year, we don't have it funded by the federal government, that we will be running in a deficit, which certainly is a concern. And that's a year to year determination subject to appropriation. The law is the law, but the fact that it's subject to appropriation makes it a, an annual decision.
Is it a state law or federal?
It's
You're saying federal funding, but I thought it was a state law.
Yep. It was federal during COVID. It's state now.
Yes. And there are many things in our budget that are subject to appropriation that have not been fully funded ever, right?
Circuit breaker, transportation, yes.
Yes. So the track record there is not super.
Right. Now those are unfunded mandates.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Any committee members have any other questions?
I just have a question, trying to come up to speed on my phone. The rollover piece, you said at this point, we're already, we haven't finished it. We're already over. Is that because of the positions that lost other funding and we needed to now bring into the operating budget? Or is that because of a diff, okay?
We haven't moved them into the operating budget yet. This is contractual increases. And for our professional staff with certifications and licenses, step in lane changes.
I see. So that, so
And it's a 2% across the board increase. It's not, you know, some exorbitant 7% increase that was contractual.
So in addition to the, the 2% increase, as you increase your credentials, yeah, moving up and
That I'm familiar with. I just optimistically was like, well, maybe that's because, as I digested it. And then one other question I had, just because I feel remiss in asking, it's, it's a small, it's a small difference that last year we were at like 38% and this year we're at 40%. Do we have any concerns about, just because some of the things you listed are driving our costs up, like the transportation piece, we were just talking about that, do we have any concerns on making this year's budget?
No, not for this year.
We have lots of concerns about next year.
We have plenty of concerns about next year. We are not concerned about this year. We did change some of our purchasing practices as well, which reflects it. We're doing everything in real time. We're not prepaying
Got it.
things, you know, so it's, it's tightening up our processes and procedures. And that couple of percent is totally makes sense with that in mind.
It was a tiny amount, just making sure I understood.
No, but that's a great question because if you're doing everything the same and it's trending more, then yes, it could compound by June. But that's not what we're
Not what we're facing at this moment. Okay.
I do have one more question. So I know at the management conference over the summer, you spent quite a bit of time going over the whole, the budget process and explaining a lot. Are you, are you seeing that come to fruition in the conversations that you're having right now with building leadership? Is that, do you see that changing some processes or practices?
Yes, in terms of giving the locus of control at the school level again. Yes, they're very excited about it. They've been doing a great job with it. In fact, we're kind of slowing, trying to slow them down because they can see four steps ahead in some cases. And they're saying, we want to make those changes now. We're like, well, hold on because everybody else isn't caught up with you yet. So we're, we're taking it piece by piece, but it's very promising. They're asking very good questions. We're moving on now to, so we've done, you're referring to the robust trainings that we've done with all of the executive team leaders and all of the cabinet members, meaning principals and, and building leaders and district leaders. And now we're going to be doing that process. Well, on, Ms. Darszewski actually already started that process with the department chairs, the seven to 12 and K through 12 department chairs, who have smaller budgets, but certainly make up a, you know, a good part of our supplies and resources. And they've started that process. And so it's, it's slowly moving across the district. And being able to tell them what's coming when they ask a particular question and them understanding it is very exciting. So we're, we're really tightening up a lot of things right now.
That's great. It's great to hear. So thank you for all the work that you've done.
Building up their capacity, getting us there. That's excellent.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments from the committee?
No.
All right. Well, thank you. Another great presentation. We really appreciate these.
Thank you. Very helpful. And unfortunate, but good foreshadowing to understand what's coming. So I appreciate it as much as I wish the news wasn't what it was. I appreciate the heads up on what to expect coming forward.
Good. Excellent. Yeah. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Andrea.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see. Next up on the agenda, we have the Bi-County Collaborative update. Dr. Cabral?
Thank you. So I don't, I don't have any significant news for you. I just have inserted this quarterly into the agenda schedule for the school committee just to keep you apprised of different things happening at the Bi-County Collaborative, which is the collaborative that, of which we are a member, and I sit on the board. So I've given you just some select documents from the annual reporting that we just received, things that I thought would be helpful, not just for Kelly, but it's kind of a reminder for everyone in terms of the membership, the 19 members other than Easton that are on the board and in the collaborative. The next page is just some general information, the current membership, as well as number of employees, programs, and the like. Do you need, do you need one?
Yeah, it just didn't make its way down the table, maybe. That might have been my error. Thank you.
Student demographics, and then giving you the students served by their disability, which you can see overwhelmingly, and probably not surprisingly, right now is emotional. At almost 32% of the students served by, by BiCo, which is not unusual for the collaboratives right now. Followed relatively closely at 29% by children on the autism spectrum. But you can see the many different programs that they have and that they provide. The cost effectiveness, this is just a breakdown of Bi-County in comparison to other collaboratives in the area. And the, we do get a membership rate for our students. Along with that, the benefits of membership include a seat at the table for fiscal decisions, for programmatic decisions, looking at the data and, and talking about different programs that may need to be developed, which suit our needs also as a district. We also can contract with specialists that we need that, you know, we may not need a full-time teacher of the deaf, for example, but we can contract also with therapists. We also benefit from professional development they offer, very specifically in social, emotional, and special needs. And we get priority spots for our students. So that has been more and more challenging over the last few years is finding programs that are suitable for our children that are in close proximity and reasonably priced that we feel confident with the programming. So we do, they, they serve members first before non-member applications for students. And then on the last page, we did just have an FY23 independent financial audit, and that is just the statement of completion and successful completion and no findings of concern. I don't know if there's other information you might want me to put together for a future meeting for you about the collaborative. I'm happy to do that. Again, I'm, I also serve on the facilities subcommittee, and we still are actively searching for sites. We think we have one now, but it's not official, so I won't announce it. But some of our programming, we lease a lot of spaces or use school classrooms in, in member districts. Unfortunately, some of our colleagues have had to close some of their schools or use more of their classrooms. And so they've had to exclude people that are renting or leasing space. And two of our buildings, including the one that has the central offices for BiCo, the administrative offices, the buildings themselves have changed hands. And there's a lot of differences in what the new landlords are charging or offering. And so we're looking to collaborate programs in a setting that may be more suitable instead of perhaps in an office building or, you know, some of the students are very high need students. So we want to make sure that they're in appropriate settings that mimic a school setting as much as possible. You know, we want them to have lunches with trays, like the children in public schools have. We want them to have auditoriums and gymnasiums. So we are in some office buildings. So we're looking for some more appropriate spaces and fortunately, after, you know, over a year and a half, we think we may have something, and I'll update you on that. And we are looking to ultimately save money on it as well, which is always good.
Wonderful. Do any committee members have any questions or comments? This is, this is great. I would be curious to see if there's available, if trending is available on that, the pie chart.
It is.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. I'd be really curious to see
Sure.
whatever's available on that in a future update.
Sure.
Anything else on that? How many students do we have utilizing the services?
We just had five. We have three right now because two exited. We usually have more than that, though. That is a very low number for us. But they are opening up some new programs, particularly for elementary students that may work well for, for our kids that are in high demand. So gives us more options. The, oh, the rate? I think that's in your packet.
So if you're one of those member districts, you get the number rate.
So what do these two tables mean?
I believe we pay the top rate
Yes.
and the bottom rate is what we would pay if we weren't a member. Right. But this also shows you a comparison of, these other names here are other collaboratives in our region. So it's what their costs are as well.
Do we pay a fee to be a member?
Yes. You asked me that last time I did it, and I forgot what it was. I will get that for you as well.
Yeah, some of these are significantly more expensive.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay. Did you have anything else, Lauren? Or Jackie? Okay. All right. Great. Thank you for that update. Next up is the vote to approve the schedule of school committee meetings for 2024, 2025, and this will be our second reading. So we can go ahead and we could vote. I do have that. Thank you. Yes. So we can go ahead. It is the second reading, so if we are in agreement, we can vote on this today. All righty. So I know last time we had some, quite a bit of discussion around the November dates. And I see, so the October 10th aligns with one, with the professional status reception night. So see that move to 6:30 per our usual scheduling there? Okay. I assume full PD is on November fifth, twenty-four, right? That's Election Day.
So we have some recommendations.
But we'll talk about that with the big schedule. Okay. Thank you. Okay.
Okay. Yes, I did have the note on December fifth.
Thank you. I thought it was going out of my.
No, you were. I actually had it still here. So I do believe that we had talked about that because it was, the twelfth and nineteenth were back-to-back.
Okay.
And so it was to bring us closer.
Yep.
Okay. So that would be then, so we've got October tenth at six-thirty. That's reflected in the revised schedule. And then November fourteenth and December fifth. So fourteenth is reflected here. The fifth would be a further edit, but we could vote on accepting that and then just have Lynn make the update after. Okay. Were there any other dates? And I think in December, I think, I think all the major holidays are clustered at the end of the month in twenty twenty-four, right? I think it's, Hanukkah's after Christmas next year, I think.
It's the same day.
Yeah. The same day, right? Yeah. Yep. Yep. Oh, right. Yeah, that is this year. Yes, we're in twenty twenty-four. Okay.
I just caught this, so I'll ask just because I didn't. My prior copy, we had June fifth and then the twenty-sixth. This one has the twelfth and the twenty-sixth. I think the twelfth is what we want, but I don't have a note that we changed it.
No.
I'm looking at my notes from last time. I had the fifth and the twenty-sixth.
Really? Wait a minute.
That's my, that's my notes from last. I mean, I think the twelfth and the twenty-sixth makes more sense. I'm not concerned. I just was raising it because I didn't realize we changed it.
Yeah. So does anybody have any notes on June fifth versus twelfth?
I don't know that it matters. I mean, I would think having them back-to-back like that makes sense. I just don't know why we originally had it that way.
Okay. I'm just gonna take it quick. Yes. Good catch. Very good catch. Yep. No, I didn't have any notes on June fifth versus twelfth.
But I don't know why I have that.
I'm just saying, look, this and that.
Maybe it's too late. I don't know.
I mean, I do.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't know.
I did it like a few times, like, no, but it looks different to me. I think the twelfth and twenty-sixth is good. I'm just calling it out in case I cross-eyed and.
Yeah, no, that looks, they look good to me.
Something, I don't know. Okay.
All right. So I will make a motion then to, a motion to approve the schedule of school committee meetings for 2024, 2025 with the noted edit of moving December twelfth to December fifth at six PM. Can I get a second?
Second.
And roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Westman, yes.
Starr, yes.
Persio, yes.
Okay, great. All right. Thank you. Next up on the agenda is public comment. So not seeing any members of the public who wish to make a comment. We do have two members of the public here. We do have two residents here, yes. Okay. So next up is superintendent notes. Dr. Cabral?
Okay. Just a couple of things. We did table the human resources director introduction this evening. I don't want anyone to be concerned. I'm just waiting for the remainder of the references to return my phone calls. Want to make sure I have all that information. We do have a, an executive team meeting on Monday at ten o'clock where at that point all the information I have will be presented up to that day. If we're still missing information, we're going to make our decision based on what we have. And so hopefully, I'm hoping to be able to make a decision with the team on Monday. So we will present the new director hopefully at the next school committee meeting. Just didn't want anyone to be concerned. The BA event is this weekend, Saturday. If you are inclined to attend, we would only ask since we are having some refreshments and we're having alternative seating other than the children's lunch tables, we do ask that you just RSVP to Lynn Souza in central administration. And again, a quick reminder, it's watching the updated film about Blanche Ames. Now they have the new school at the end of it and the rest of it has been edited. And we are going to be offering tours. We have the filmmaker and some family members of the Ames coming that are going to have the opportunity to speak. It's a short afternoon and starts at one-thirty, I believe.
Yeah, one-thirty.
Starts at, yeah. And we, it's one-thirty, four o'clock. Yep. And so people have asked, can they bring their children with them? Absolutely. It's a very family-friendly event. We hope to see children, grandparents, friends, neighbors. You don't have to have children in the schools to attend. If you have any interest, you don't have to be a resident to attend. If you have interest in history or the Ames family or would like to see the new building, we have some shortened tours that we're going to be providing. The building and all the grounds are one hundred percent accessible to everyone, so there are no worries about that. And again, if you could just RSVP to Lynn Souza in central administration, we'd really appreciate it. And I also was authorized by the town administrator to sign our designer contract for our security project. So that is now moving forward. It's actually a statement to proceed because we need to present to the select board. But I was authorized to sign that and get that going so that they can start working on their plans, getting in the buildings and working on their plans. And the professional development day, I'll let Mrs. Pruitt talk about that, but I just want to say it was fantastic. Cornelius Minor, international speaker, was just tremendous. We also had Justin Gomes, attorney from Stoneman, Chandler and Miller, to talk to us about some updated laws that educators need to be aware of. We had representatives from different programming that we're working with and still we rise and we're in wisdom. And then all of the other offerings were done by staff, sharing their knowledge, coming back from workshops, courses. It was very engaging. Professionals chose what they needed for their individual practice and their goals. And it was a fabulous day. In fact, Cornelius Minor, international speaker, is stealing our model of how the professional day is set up. And he's welcome to it. So he was very impressed and we were certainly impressed. And thank you, those that were able to attend, certainly everybody can't, but it was just, it was an awesome day. It was an awesome day. So great job. That's all I have.
Right. Thank you. Any comments or questions for Dr. Cabral? All right. So next up, assistant superintendent notes, Mrs. Pruitt.
So just to extend on the professional development day, as Dr. Cabral mentioned, Cornelius Minor was our keynote speaker. He was born in Liberia and moved to the United States in the third grade. He really spoke about how to educate all students in such a turbulent time. He spoke about how our children have changed and because of the times that have changed and the climate and how we need to adapt our teaching to meet the needs of our students. He did it in such a non-threatening way. Everyone, I'm sorry, entertaining, yep. We all had to teach each other how to put on a shoe. But it was, it was really remarkable. And Craig, Mr. Davidson and I did have some individual time with him. I picked him up from his hotel in the morning. Mr. Davidson drove him to the train in the afternoon and some of the things that he did share with us were pretty amazing. He is actually being asked by the government in Liberia to reform education in Liberia after the civil war, now that the civil war has ended in their country. So, but he was really excited to be with us and really boasted a lot about how wonderful our staff was. And just like Dr. Cabral said, we did have four outside staff member, outside of the Easton Public Schools present sessions, but we had twenty-six staff members in the Easton Public Schools that presented for our staff, which was close to sixty sessions that they offered. One of our paraprofessionals for the first time since I've been here presented on cultural trauma. And he was, he was absolutely fantastic. Big shout out to Brett Sheehan for that and, and just all the other staff members that participated. We had brand-new staff members step up and just the ratings of everything. So we did send out a feedback form. We've had one-third of the staff respond and we, the feedback that we're getting is extremely positive. Everyone wants more of Cornelius and everyone also, to make a generalization, really appreciated the choice and the various options in the choices and how remarkable the sessions were, the individual sessions. So we were really happy, you know, one, one staff member even commented that for the first time in a long time, they walked away with the entire day being meaningful to their practice. And, you know, that's, that's hard. That's hard to accomplish in a professional development day. So it was, it was a great day. It was really, really great. Great way to end the week and start a long weekend. And then with that being said, we also even had a staff member that reached out to me over the weekend because she was so invigorated by the session that she presented. And she is now going to be through Eastern University, offering a ten-hour session that is an expansion of one of her sessions. And so Eastern University is our offerings for staff members. It will be going out tomorrow to all staff and that will be inclusive of her session where we'll be able to provide ten PDPs, professional development points for staff members. So that's Becky Michael at the middle school, if anybody knows Becky. She's remarkable and she went home all invigorated and speaking about, about the day and what she could do to help, you know, further, further her workshop. So we also had our professional development meeting, team meeting yesterday. We, like I said, just briefly, we do have some recommendations that we'll be sharing with Dr. Cabral and the cabinet and the executive team on professional, on the professional days next year, moving forward. And then we also did have a, have an opportunity to look at all the feedback and kind of talk about how are we going to formulate some of what our recommendations will be to formulate professional development for next year. And that's, that's what I have today for you. A little short, but that's okay. It's been a long meeting.
Does anybody have any questions or comments for Mrs. Pruitt?
Sounds amazing. I was so sad I couldn't make it.
You know, Cornelius Minor recognized how our school committee members were there and he said that doesn't happen in other districts. So it's a really, it's a shout out to those of you that were able to attend and we know your heart was there to be there.
Your heart was there. We're called.
Yeah. Yeah. There we go. I would have enjoyed that. Yes. Sorry. Didn't interrupt.
Well, I think we'll probably, those of us who were able to attend, I'm sure, will make comments, but I just wanted, before we get into that, just recognize how much work it took for you and the professional development committee to put together such a robust day. I looked through the schedule and was like, wow. There was a lot. So, you know, support staff, whoever was involved with figuring out locations and signups and all of that. Beautiful job, really well done. You all could have another career as event planners, apparently.
Well, shout out to Julie Schein, my executive administrative assistant, for putting it all into Teach Point and organizing the rooms and making sure that everything was laid out. And Livia Ramos, our director of instructional technology, who was able to work with the technology team and making sure that everything was set up. I mean, they were running around the place, you know, running around the Oliver Ames, really ensuring that everything was set up and, and ready for the presenters. And Julie was, was there the entire day with the sign-in sheets and making sure that everybody knew where they were going. She's, she's been, she was remarkable.
And giving away the stuff.
And giving away.
Yeah. It certainly looked like there must have been a lot of moving parts and a lot of planning. So kudos for you and your team for doing all of that.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Nancy?
Okay. So yes, Cornelius Minor was wonderful to listen to, invigorating. It was great. You know, I've done PD for a hundred years, so it was, it was good. I wish I could have done the rest of the day, but I couldn't. And actually, I tried to fill in the feedback form, but I couldn't get because I didn't do session one or two, you know, or whatever. I couldn't get through, but it was very good. I had good comments. I was just going to say something. Oh, I guess that's it. So that's it. Finals at OA end tomorrow. Finals, God, mid-year, mid-year.
Don't get them too excited.
I know. And, oh, I know. Speaking of that professional development and as we're looking at the big year calendar, I really want to make a recommendation that opening day for the faculty is at the OA Auditorium. It's comfortable, it's air-conditioned, everybody can fit in and you can do your little snacks out in the atrium and be there and then come into the auditorium. I think we've grown out of our O cafeteria for the opening day and I'm just putting my two cents in that, you know, watching what happened on Friday, that it would just be much more professional to have it there. So that's my two cents on next year.
Okay.
Okay. That's me.
Okay. Jackie, any updates for this week?
Nothing tonight. Thank you, Jen.
Okay. All right, great. Lauren?
So I also want to echo the PD day. Kudos to the PD team. Like Jen said, it was really cool to read through the program offerings and see teachers' names and like stuff that, like a teacher that is a classroom teacher, teaching technology, like Brian Tyler, like that was cool. I don't know. And so, and Cornelius Minor, I, besides the fact that he embarrassed me to honor him, you were an example for an illustration and it was fantastic. Thank you.
And you have great shoes.
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah. Yes. I remember. He was captivating. He was entertaining. He, it was, he had messaging that, you know, that Mrs. Pruitt, you had said, but it was like, I was just enthralled, like just watching him. If he could come to Easton and stay, which is.
He's going to go do a whole country.
And the fact that he's a seventh-grade social studies teacher in Brooklyn Public Schools and took the day off, I presume, to come speak to us is just amazing. So that, so thank you for letting school committees join you guys on, on your day because that was something I will, you know, always remember. I, it was, it was quite a treat. I also want to remind everyone that on Tuesday, the twenty-third, is the English, the English Language Learners Family, I'm sorry, pulling it up, the multilingual family gathering. It's at Blanche Ames at six-thirty. Pizza and cookies will be served and childcare will be provided by the YMCA. It's to connect, make new friends and learn about the ALPAC, which is the English Learner Parent Advisory Council. We also received emails to sign up our third through tenth graders for the math, oh my goodness, what is it?
Acceleration Academy.
Acceleration Academy.
Yes.
I also want to remind everyone that on Tuesday, the 23rd, is the English, the English language learners family, I'm sorry, pulling it up, the multilingual family gathering, it's at Blanche Ames, at 6:30. Pizza and cookies will be served, and childcare will be provided by the YMCA. It's to connect, make new friends, and learn about the ALPAC, which is the English Learner Parent Advisory Council. We also received emails to sign up our third through 10th graders for the math oh my goodness, what is it?
Acceleration Academy.
Acceleration Academy.
Yes.
For February and April vacation, and it seems like an amazing program, and it was a grant that, that Director Davidson received and applied for and received, so thank you. I do have a question that I was hoping I can ask you. Is it neat, so this was asked to me, so I'm just asking you as well. Is it needs-based, or how are you choosing, how is the committee or whoever selecting the students for the program? I, I can only imagine that you've received a lot of applications already, because people have reached out to me about it, so I personally was very excited to receive it and filled mine out right away. But I'm just curious how, how the students will be selected, and and if they're, if it's need-based, and if it, if they'll be challenged, if it's not need-based, and would, will you be consulting their teachers to find out what this particular student's needs are? Okay, that's it. Sorry, I'm all over the place?
Yes.
So what we did as a leadership team is we worked with the three buildings, RO, middle school, and high school, on identifying students that would benefit from the program. And those students and their families will receive a specific email, and we look to fill the slots with those students first. From there, we open it up to everybody, first come, first served, based on that email that went out in the signup form. And the beautiful thing about the Acceleration Academy is it's just like our regular classrooms that are being run. We can differentiate instruction and accelerate learning for all students that attend. This will be, I think, I believe, my fourth time running this program and overseeing it, and it's it really is, it's magical when you're there. It's a project-based learning, really hammering down on those math skills necessary to access the curriculum at whatever level you are at. And then, being able to do that within that week gives the students almost a month of math education in those four days. And so those, those slots, we're looking to identify the students by the end of next week and communicate with the families on who will be able to attend. We've had great responses from our own staff. Mrs. Pruitt and I went through all the applications that came through. We do not believe we'll have to go outside for any staffing needs.
Awesome.
Across the board, it was, it was great. We'll be communicating with our staff in the upcoming days. And then, as of right now, 900 families reach out and fill out the form so far.
And 12 students per grade?
No, so it's, so the way the grant works is, we identify grade levels that might need it a little bit more than others. So right now, don't quote me exactly on it, but I believe there's 36 slots for grades 3, 4, 5, 24 for 6 and 7, might go down a little bit from that, 12 for 8, 9, and 10.
So it wasn't sent to all students?
It was sent to all grades 3 through 10.
Oh, okay.
Right now, and then targeted families will have a separate email that they will receive.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay. Kelly, anything for this week?
I am looking forward to going to the event on Saturday, and I will very likely be bringing my future Blanche Ames student with me. So he can see the school, because he is a tad bit jealous that I have seen it and he has not. I forewarn everyone that I will have company, but he will be very excited to go, yes. So I am very excited to be able to come or attend.
Okay, all right, so I think most of the things I've kind of already checked off. Just want to remind everybody that there is a DEIA meeting on January 30th at 4:30. And I, I'm looking forward to the event this weekend as well. And I think everything else was covered. Attending the PD day, I could only stay for 30 minutes, and I seriously considered canceling the very important, non-movable appointments and meetings that I had, because I was so enthralled by our keynote speaker. So, again, it was, and I was just so impressed with, with the schedule, and as Lauren pointed out, you know, the workshops that the teachers were putting on were really neat, you know, Mr. Benson's, I was like, I don't even know what that word means. I had to go, I had to go look that up, see what he was talking about, but I was like, that's a neat thing, I would never whatever it was that he was teaching was, was very specific and not something that, you know, you would just think like, oh, that's a skill that needs to be taught, so.
And really tailored to the needs of Eastern.
Yeah.
Opposed to some vendor coming in with information.
Right, yeah, yeah, so there, there were all kinds of just, just really, really neat and interesting
Professional capacity here is outstanding.
Yeah, 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 to see the amount of expertise in the presenters. Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, really amazing. All right, let's see, so, our next meeting is Thursday.
Jackie?
Oh, I'm sorry.
She passed.
Nope, yes. So our, our next meeting is Thursday, February 1st, 6:00 PM at Simmons Lecture Hall. And with that, would somebody like to make a motion to adjourn? Yay.
Second, Persio.
Great, roll call vote?
DeLuca, yes.
Westman, yes.
Starr, yes?
Lynn, yes.
Persio, yes. All right, good night, everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.